Good morning, everybody. Uh, let's uh call the meeting to order and let's uh stand for a pledge first, start the day off.
United States of America.
Alright, we'll uh take real call Mitch.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Eisner.
Here.
Lindsey.
Here.
Deppus. Sullivan.
Here.
Alright, uh, jump into action items here. Let's uh talk about fall sports participation or we can do it separate or right now it goes high school.
Okay, um, the SWAL, I still have not received the invite yet, but the SWAL conference is either, the superintendents are gonna meet either today or tomorrow to try to take an official stance on sports participation in the fall. Monday, there was an informal vote to take recommendations back to every district's school board as to what the A.D.'s principals and superintendents recommended. The, the vote took place for football only with the schools that are participating in football. That would be the SWAL conference. Um, so that was Fettermore, Mitterpoint, Darlington.
Cuba.
Cuba City, thank you. And then Belleville and Orfordville Parkview are part of our conference for football this year, and they had two athletic directors representing those two schools. The conference vote uh ended up being four-two to recommend that they move football to the spring of the year. Following the W.I.A. schedule. The, the concern is that the season is seven weeks long and it overlaps spring baseball. Based on the W.I.A. scheduling, uh, football would overlap baseball by three weeks. Uh, after some discussion, then the SWAL conference said, well, then we'll just cut two games off of the football season. So they would take a seven-game season and make it a five-game season that still has one week overlap with baseball. Uh, the, the big push was to, maybe we'll move baseball back, but a lot of conversation around baseball, softball, all the spring sports basically had no season last year. So therefore, you know, it was like, you know, we don't wanna really touch the spring sports. There, they've been adjusted by the W.I.A. Mitterpoint, that advisory vote, I voted while I, while I believe as far as the pandemic is concerned, playing in the spring makes more sense. The W.I.A., in my opinion, has really tied our hands. And, and we have so many students that are two-sport athletes and, and, and boys that play football and baseball. It's, it's almost unfair to ask them to have to make a decision.
And that also really aren't the only sports that overlap. You know, you've got volleyball and softball, and you also have, have track in there with some of our, you know.
Cross-country and track.
Yep, co-op with Dodgeville. And so there's overlap in other sports, too.
We have to be respectful to every single sport.
Yep, yep.
And, and, and our athletes, I, I think, you know, I, I don't know. I, what, what sports team is it fair to? If you're gonna make somebody who wouldn't play football now has to say, well, I really enjoyed baseball a little bit more, so I'm not gonna play football because of this problem. I'm, I'm just gonna hold out and wait for baseball. Um, I had a chance to speak to Coach Paul Scale, I talked with our athletic director, Miss Dahl, talked to the high school principal. And again, while I think for the pandemic, it makes more sense to play in the spring, we, we feel, in, in fairness to our student athletes, we would recommend playing in the fall sports season. Uh, again, the W.I.A. had a plan from the southwest part of Wisconsin. And originally said, well, we, this, this can't happen. This, there's no way we can pull this off. And then two, three weeks later, give you a, a slightly different plan that isn't as good as the plan that was recommended three weeks ago. So you have two bad possible choices. And it's a matter of what, what do we feel is in the best interest of our student athletes?
Well, this is kinda how I see it. I agree with the email Miss Dahl sent out and what you're saying. I'm not interested at all in making kids choose between one sport or another, because I, I, as far as I'm concerned, all sports are equal. Um, I also look at it another way. Both of my children are involved in sports. Now, they're not quite the fall sports that are being presented, but my daughter plays youth softball, my son's been in wrestling since, well, we never stopped. Wrestles with kids all around the state. Some of these kids travel the country. You know, just because we don't participate in the fall sports that are being offered, I'm not gonna stand here and vote no, because I'll be an absolute hypocrite if I knew so. You know, and, you know, we go down to the park on Thursday nights and watch softball, and I see people down there all the time playing softball. You know, some board members, some administrators. You know, and I feel if, if we're gonna vote no for this, we're complete hypocrites. When we're doing, we are playing sports or watching sports ourselves. And then the last final thing is, you know, in this district, like many other districts, athletes are held accountable through the uh, through your grades, the policies this district has put in place, you know, the D.F. notices. And I wonder if, if there's no sports for a kid to play, how are they gonna find thems- themselves accountable for, because they ain't gonna care about grades. Why would you care about grades if you don't have nothing to play for?
In the athletic code, too.
In the, yeah, in the athletic code. So I, I just think there's a multiple things and, you know, I would be in favor of the spring sports schedule had it not overlapped with everything. But I, we can't be taking athletes away from one sport, especially spring sports when they all got shut down last year. That's just not fair, and that's how I stare.
So you, you used the word hypocrite, and I'm torn with some of those same feelings. But I'm coming at it from a different perspective in that, yes, I, my kids have played softball this summer. But we also, as, as a board, followed what our community survey feedback said and what our, our district administrators advised and what our local health professionals advised and went with a hybrid model where from seventh grade to our seniors, they're in school twenty percent of the time. If we allow them, if, if we if we allow people to play sports five days a week, or maybe even in some cases six days a week, but tell them that we can only have them in school one day a week, I feel like we're being hypocrites in that regard. I feel like we are telling them that athletics is more important than education. And that, we are a school, our first priority is to educate our students. If we can only have them here twenty percent of the time, how can we let them play sports a hundred percent of the time? So I'm very much in favor of pushing it to the spring in hopes that something is better than nothing and that we'll be in a position where we can allow athletics. But I, I don't see how we can say we're doing the hybrid model and then turn around and say we can play sports.
I, I have another concern about football in the spring. You know, we've had a lot of donors donate money to this football field to put a pretty nice stadium together so far. It's not completely finished. We can't even get baseball and softball games in sometimes in March. And then we're gonna try to play, get football games in before the other spring sports start. Um, I don't know if you've ever been out on that football field in March, but it's not, it's not even, it's, it's still partially frozen. And so, yeah, it might be a five-week season, but we're gonna tear it up. We might have to have games canceled where, you know, with the weather situation, so maybe we get three games in. There is an option, if fall sports are played, where if the season would get cut short, okay, that they could, it, it's a certain percentage of games. If you get a certain percentage of games in and um, there's a positive task or an exposure and the season's shut down, it's done. But if you don't reach those amount of games, they, they can opt to go to the spring. That's a, that's an option in there. So, um, you know, volleyball is, is another situation, probably not as high-risk as football. Cross-country's low risk. They started practice, because, you know, we co-op with Dodgeville. And, you know, Dodgeville's allowing fall sports. So, um, just, you know, consider the fact of the opportunity for our kids in, you know, in the spring compared to the fall.
Is there any other board member that would like to uh touch on this topic?
Good morning, Nate.
Oh, there you go, Larry, there you are.
Hey, Larry Steppes. I, I support uh our fall sports season, too, and I, I don't know, somebody said it earlier, if they were to allow a spring, a spring season that would not overlap, I would be okay with that, too, but under the circumstances, I think we oughta go ahead and give it our best shot. And uh, just like I said, with uh in-room classroom instruction, the parents then can decide. Uh, we leave it up to the parents, and I think uh, I don't think it's in, in our best interest to try to tell parents what's best for their kids. Um, so if, if somebody hasn't made a motion yet to, to go ahead with the fall sports season, has it been a motion made?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion now. We, we continue with the fall sports season with both the high school and the middle school. And we comply with the uh W.I.A. guidelines with the fall season.
We'll have a sec, once we have a second, then we can have a discussion on it.
I will second the motion.
Now, we can have more future discussion on uh, on this issue.
Just, just a note on the, on the middle school. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't part of the meeting yesterday morning, but, you know, I did get info on it. Um, the Southern Eight Athletic Directors, which is our middle school conference, are kinda waiting to see what happens with the high school seasons and kinda go, go by that. Right now, they're saying definitely cross-country in the fall because it is lower risk. And possibly looking at moving volleyball in the spring if the conferences decide to do that with volleyball. So just, just so you know, we're leaning towards going with whatever we do at, at, at the high school level.
Okay.
I'd like to give a comment. I agree with Joni in that uh it seems hypocritical to have the restrictions we have for returning to school and then not have them in regards to fall sports. Everyone is suffering with this pandemic. Um, I would not be in favor of initiating the fall season. I would go with the spring season and hope we gain a little more information, um, maybe a vaccine, something. Uh, I, I think it's foolish to have the kids return to fall sports. And I know there's a number of athletes that are depending on scholarships and things, and that's true all across the nation. And um, I, I just can't see the contradiction uh of doing one thing and then the other. That's my comments.
Dr. Dunn, is there anywhere on there you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. Um, this might be, I, I mean, I, I feel like this is the toughest decision I have had to make so far as a board member. Just because everyone makes a lot of good points, there's a huge value to athletics to these students and these families. We're in a difficult position where we're having kids choose between sports. Spring sports has already been compromised last year. It's not good. It's not good. But, you know, at the end of the day, our mission, to borrow your terms, Nate, our, our mission as a, as a district is to educate our kids. And if, if we encourage project activities that increase the risk of an outbreak in the school and threaten closing the entire school down, I, I, I can't see the justification in that. I, I also feel like we need to be consistent in our approach. We're being extremely cautious with our hybrid model, knowing that the pandemic is worsening, not getting better in our area. And knowing that if we tread cautiously, we might be able to keep the school open because we all value in-person learning. In addition, you know, I, I think that when you start, when you try to start fall sports in the middle of a pandemic, you risk canceling the entire season prematurely. And, you know, we've seen it all over the country. Um, you know, Minnesota, Illinois have already postponed their sports. You know, we've seen college conferences cancel their fall sports, and they have way more at stake, both from an ath- athlete standpoint and a financial standpoint and an educational standpoint. It, it's, it, it seems like if we can make a spring season work, even if it's truncated, I trust the, the conference A.D.s and superintendents to adjust the schedule of the winter sports and adjust the schedule of the spring sports to allow fall sports to exist in the spring. Where the pandemic may be trending downward and there's less of a risk of an outbreak on a sports team spreading into the classroom and threatening the closure of an entire building. Now, if this board decides to go with fall sports, we need to consider a few things. One is following the guidance provided by the W.I.A. in terms of reducing risk of spread, and I appreciate Larry including that in the motion. Other things to consider would be, can the high school athletes and the middle school athletes, for that matter, be in their own cohort in the classroom, be in their own group? So that if they pick up something in the locker room or on the practice field, that it's contained amongst themselves. Should we require that fall athletes go a hundred percent virtual so that if they get infected while playing, they don't jeopardize the the, the moving forward of in-person classes for, for the rest of us? Those are some things that we should consider if, if this board decides to vote in favor of fall sports, but as hard as the decision this, this is, I just, I don't see it as the wise decision at this time in the middle of a pandemic.
Alright, so I'll weigh in on this, uh, in my opinions. I cannot disagree with, with Joni's statement as far as being hypocritical and allowing our kids to play sports and athletics and yet not being able to have them in class a hundred percent of the time. However, we are still teaching them with virtual learning and, and everything else. Uh, and this, this part comes to uh not so much as an opinion, as uh an actual real-world life event with me personally. Maybe you can probably attest to this, when I was in junior high, probably not on the best path in life. And even in early high school, um, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I was uh, I was getting drunk on school nights and some other bad things when I was younger. And kinda getting a little bit wound up here, but what saved me, what made me graduate high school was athletics, was wrestling. Had I not had that, honestly, I don't know where I'd be today. It uh, so it, it's not just an opinion on this, that athletics helps kids stay in school. Um, and this is Mitterpoint. I mean, we're, we're a sheltered community. Think of the kids in Milwaukee and Madison, areas that might not have, you know, you take sports away from them, what's that gonna do? What could that do? Um, I've heard from parents already in our community that that, that this is going through their kids' minds already. And like I said, this is not just my opinion, this, this is literally what happened with me. Had I not had athletics, I, I was on work release two, two years in my, in high school, I came back to wrestle. That was it. And now, look, where am I sitting? You guys elected me as board president. So to say that this is not as, not important as in, in college and, and everything else, I, I can't, I disagree with that because this is, I mean, this this is a very important issue, so I uh, that's basically my feelings on this is I, even if, and I can't, and I'll, I'll agree with Doc Dunn, if it, if it takes, you know, putting uh cohorts that are in athletics together and, and saying, look, you guys are all virtual. I mean, let's face it, the high school kids are in school one day a week anyway. So if they go all virtual and, and when they're athletes, as long as they're held accountable, I don't, I don't have any opposition to that. I mean, it makes, it makes sense if that's what we need to do, but it uh, yeah, so basically, at the end of the day, that, that is my, my thoughts on this is, is we need to give these athletes a chance to keep moving forward with the athletics being as safe as possible. That's uh, so that's my thoughts on this.
So Dr. Dunn mentioned something that just came to my, it came to my mind. Why, why do they need to use the locker rooms, I guess? I mean, we can have the locker room shut. They can just go, they can go home and get showered or whatnot. That would clearly eliminate a lot of the risk.
Well, if they weren't coming into school at all, I mean, they wouldn't need.
But I mean, like after practices, they don't need the locker.
Especially if they're doing in the cohorts, right? Which, you know, if they're gonna be the athletic cohorts or something, I guess.
Girls do that anyway. They never shower. They just go home.
Part of the football stuff, I do believe they store in the locker, so, so we gotta find.
We can find a way to make that work.
And Vicky's gonna probably say the same sort of thing here. The cohort models are based on the classes. Uh, it'd be really difficult in order to take all the football players and put them together. Now, there are quite a few groups that probably have the football players put together in different spots, but to do it for everybody, that'd be a little difficult, especially at this point, because teachers are preparing for, this is what it's gonna look like in three days. Uh, they have their rosters for each hour, they're, they've been doing all this work. To reorder those, or to regroup those cohorts would be really difficult in order to get all the classes to fit, just based on athletics. That'd be really difficult.
Right.
The easiest would be to, to have them go virtual.
True.
So I mean, obviously, I would. Like, easily jump back into their cohort that's in the building.
Yep, I'd be more in favor of obviously trying to make it all work with them being in person, because I do believe the in-person part is obviously a very important part. And the accountability piece that you're all talking about is super important. That's why we want kids, or we're hiring kids, to be on the Zoom meetings when they have a Zoom meeting for their class. They need to be there because it's an important part for the accountability piece. So, and Miss Dahl's probably gonna say the same thing here, too.
You know, at the middle school, we, we had to group our cohorts because we have certain students that need that extra touch or that uh intervention. So if you wanna keep your groups at ten, at ten, that's, that's gonna be pretty difficult in the cohorts. Plus, we have eighth graders that are taking Spanish one, freshman algebra, and then geometry. And we had to make sure they were all in one cohort. So it's, it really would be difficult to try to move those cohorts around. I know cross-country, uh, the person that helps out with that, and that, that's more of an intramural sport for us, he's just gonna have them um doing off-site workouts. So they won't even be coming back into the school. So, just so you know that.
Dr. Dunn?
Yeah, um, another question I have is whether, I mean, the, the motion is to allow fall sports with the uh W.I.A. return to fall sports guidance as, as instructed. I, I, I need some reassurance from the athletic director and the coaches that are able to follow these guidelines and willing to follow these guidelines. You know, more specifically, you know, it, it talks about hand sanitizing, spacing out, masks during practice. And talks about designating a COVID coach um to coordinate all of this and keep track of all this. And, you know, I, is, uh, you know, Vicky, are you, are, are you able to uh make sure that these practices are supervised, to make sure these coaches are following these guidelines? And uh, you know, I, and, you know, to, to what extent is there gonna be some assurance to the board that these guidelines are gonna be followed so that we can do everything we can to uh, to prevent an outbreak and spread?
I, I've held off on having a meeting with my head coaches just because I wasn't sure where the season was going, so whatever's decided here, I will meet with the head coaches and I'll ask that our athletic trainer to be present because our athletic trainer is at the practices. So I'll work closely with him and our head coaches, and uh I'll talk to some of our assistants also. And we're gonna have to make sure we follow those guidelines. I mean, one, one thing that I'm definitely not shy of, if I have to come down on a coach, I'll come down on a coach. I don't shy away from that at all. I think people in this room who know me know that's true.
And, and just so everyone's clear, in all of the SWAL conference meetings we've had, there is a lot of concern, conversations around what's the right thing to do, and, and, and as we all look at all these things. The SWAL conference had voted to keep volleyball in the fall. So that was their recommendation to take back the school boards as well as that. That, that vote was keep volleyball in the fall and push the football to the spring. But currently, football is a fall-season sport, so.
And, and also, there, there's gonna be protocols for fans, so anybody that's listening on this, this meeting needs to understand that, that we, we're not allowing everybody into these events. It's gonna be mainly workers and so many tickets per player.
I'll be happy to stay home just so some other parent can watch the football. Don't wait for you.
We remember that if you show up.
And we're, and we're looking at getting the equipment so that we can live stream both volleyball, you know, any event in the gym or out on the football field is one of the things the SWAL conference is asking that we do because of trying to limit attendance at, at these events.
Doc?
You know, speaking of different sports, I guess I, I have two questions. One is, let's say the conference votes four-to-two to proceed with fall sports. What happens to those two schools that had wished to not do fall sports? Are they, is it up to them to either sit out the season or are they gonna be, is there kind of a, um, an understanding that that all six teams would comply with the majority rule on that? That's my first question. Second question is, you know, you make a point, and Vicky made a point of how not all sports are the same in terms of risk of spread and, and contact. And how, you know, maybe there was a vote to move football to the spring, keep volleyball or keep cross-country, you know, like the state, you know, is starting low, low-risk sports early. You know, I hate to uh pick and choose different sports, but is that something that may be deliberated on at this meeting, and is there a potential that high-risk, higher-risk sports might get moved and lower-risk sports might get kept in the? And is there a potential that high-risk, higher-risk sports might get moved and lower-risk sports might get kept in the fall?
That, that was the general direction coming out of the most recent SWOL meeting. While volleyball, I believe, is considered a moderate-risk sport, the conference felt that that was something that could take place in the fall. Obviously, we all know contact football, soccer, you know, where being in close proximity to, to different people, your own teammates, teammate, you know, athletes from other schools is a high risk. The hope is that it would be a conference-wide decision, but there's no unity in the conference. Several athletic conferences have come forward and voted as a conference to move to the spring of the year. So they will have their own conference season. I do know one of the schools in our conference, that's in our football conference, has made a similar decision, recognizing spring might be a better fit due to the overlap. That school has, their school board had said, "We will play football in the fall." And if that's the case, then, uh, basically, you're, you're almost playing like a non-conference schedule. You're, you're trying to schedule as many events as you can for your football team to play in the fall. A lot of school, a lot of conferences are saying, "We're not going to recognize a conference champion this year" due to the nature of some schools participating in the conference, others not. Or, um, if a school has to quarantine, you know, and, and also is not able to play, they, they don't feel that that's necessarily being fair to all of the schools and to say, "Oh, well, you were undefeated, but now because you've had to quarantine for two weeks, that's two losses, you're out of the conference title." So, so they're not going to recognize a conference champion this year, but just trying to provide opportunities for their student athletes to be able to participate and play. So I guess, the long answer, if, if Mineral Point were to play football in the fall, uh, in essence, we would probably have two conference teams. I believe we would have two conference teams to play, and then we would reach out to other conferences to try to help fill in the schedule.
Does this motion allow you to make a decision between different fall sports? Or, and is that something that the conferences, um, you know, that has on the table?
This, this, the motion on the table, really, as far as the SWOL conference is concerned, really only impacts football. Because the football, the schools that make up the conference for football are the ones that the majority voted, they would, they would like to see football in the spring. The conference schools said they wanted volleyball to stay in the fall. So if, if this, the motion as it sits gives me direction for whenever this, uh, meeting comes up and how to represent Mineral Point at the SWOL conference meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the only, the only question I have is, and this probably ain't something that nobody here can answer, but why, why would the conference want volleyball in the fall when we hear about how the pandemic spreads indoors? That's, I guess that's just a question that kind of befuddles me.
I, I think, I think they look at, not, not knowing all of the logic, they're looking at it as, it's a non-contact sport, and get that, you know, but, uh, you know, following the WI guidelines, if you're not on the court or on the field, you are to wear a mask. So that there's, there's less spread. The conference has come forward and said, you know, you look at your facility and you determine, so Mineral Point would get to determine how many tickets per athlete the other team could sell. You know, so, okay, we've got a lot of space in our gym, we can socially distance, so we'll allow four tickets per athlete, you know, for our team and our opponent's team, or something of that nature. So I think, I think there's just, in the mindset of a lot of people, because volleyball, you tend to stay away from your opponent, you know, other than directly at the net. And that's just a brief, a color, that they feel, even though it is listed as a moderate risk, they, they, the conference really believes it's more of a low-risk sport.
Go ahead, Doc.
Uh, I think Merrick Gary made some good point. I just wanna clarify this. So, um, there's gonna be two meetings. One is the conference of the football teams. And then there will be another meeting of the conference that includes all other fall sports. Is that correct?
No, that, that'll be all in the same meeting.
All in the same meeting? Okay.
Separate, basically separate motions, almost like a board meeting, you know, okay? The, the, the recommendation was to keep cross-country in the fall because you can, you can do the track timing that, you know, kids wear a wristband and it tracks their time when they cross the finish line. And you can keep people, it's a little bit easier to keep people socially distanced there. Golf is another sport that would happen in the fall. And then the conference recommendation is to keep the volleyball in the fall. So all of those, you know, votes would come up. And given, you know, taking the direction that the school board gives is how I would vote accordingly at this SWOL meeting.
So you, you say the conference recommendation. Are, are you basing that on the informal straw poll that you referred to earlier?
Yes.
Okay. So nothing's been officially decided, and you'll decide on each sport in this meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Joining you with something yours.
But we've gotten into a lot of details around how this could work, and I just wanna take it back to, we as a school district talk about academic excellence. And again, we're putting kids in school 20% of the time. So now is an opportunity, we, we've talked the talk about academic excellence. We need to walk that walk, and this is a character-defining moment for us as a school district. If, if we move forward with fall sports when we can't, when we are not comfortable putting kids in school, does that, how, what message does that send to our students? Does it, does it tell students that academics are more important than academics? What message does it send to parents, to the community, to other districts in the area? I just, this is, um, this decision has impacts that go far beyond this season and really tell the world what our priorities are. And so we've, there's a lot of good points, and I am not, um, I don't wanna minimize the importance that sports bring to a student's, um, a student's career, high school career. But what message are we sending about where our priorities are? And maybe, maybe our priorities are in different places. But as a school, we've talked about academic excellence in our mission statement and when we brand ourselves.
There are other schools in the area that are going hybrid and playing fall sports. South Western was going face-to-face, they switched to hybrid. Dodgeville, uh, they're in a somewhat of a hybrid schedule. Just so we know that it's just not Mineral Point that has to make this tough decision.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I agree with Aaron in maybe parsing out the different sports. Uh, there's certainly a, a big difference in cross-country versus contact football, as you all know, and wrestling. I could see parsing out the different sports. And again, I agree with Joni. I watched a rather impassioned comment by a high school senior in Georgia. And he said, "What is one life worth?" And this is a student athlete apparently of some prominence. And his was to the, uh, school board. And I can't tell you the time or place, but it was on television. And his contention, as a very good student athlete apparently, is that, is it really worth one life? Is, is, for example, this activity worth someone's life? And that's what, um, came to my mind. I have a different perspective. I have numerous relatives that work in the healthcare field. They are being hammered by COVID. I have a brother who's an ICU physician who, um, tells me, "This is no joke." He's lost colleagues, nurses, I'm talking physicians he's lost. So I, I, I agree with Joni. I cannot be hypocritical and say, "We're gonna do hybrid, and then we're gonna have fall football." I just can't vote for that. That's the end of my comment.
I kinda have a little bit of, kind of a, I, and, and Joni, I understand it, um, your opinion on this, and, and I don't disagree. But we are still giving our students an avenue to learn. So say you have a, a junior in high school that knows they're gonna go to college, they wanna be a physician, they wanna be this. They're gonna continue their path forward, whatever it takes, to learn, to educate themselves. Say you have a, a student, same age, same class, they're not sure what they're gonna do. And, and again, this kind of reflects back to my, my own experiences. If I don't have this, what is, what is keeping me here? And trust me, in the trades, we need workers too. I'd say, "Hey, come aboard, we need you." But what if the only thing keeping that kid, one day a week virtually, is the, the getting out on the football field to, you know, maybe make the play, and, and I, but then I understand what the doctors are, you know, they're, you know, medically, there's a, there's an issue there too as far as the virus, but. And then, so, so what if we, so what if we do postpone to the spring? What's gonna happen if they quarantine and, and we're still in the same boat? Can we guarantee that we'll be able to play in the spring then?
No, I, I don't think we can guarantee it.
So, so if we, that's gonna be, that's the next thing, where we, we say, "Well, let's kick the can down the road, let's just hopefully be playing in the spring," and then next thing, no, these senior athletes are done. And my, my, kinda like I said, my thoughts is we're giving them a hybrid learning option to still educate the, the students. And if we, but if we take this away from them, this, this might be it. We might, they might not have another chance.
Nate May, Nate?
Yeah.
Uh, Larry here. I've been listening to the discussion, and, uh, and, and something that we should keep in mind is, you know, these kids, some of these kids are gonna, they're gonna play sports, regardless if it's in our gym or in a, in a barn somewhere, these kids will not stay home. So we could either say no to sports through the public school systems, and this is not only for Mineral Point, this is going through all the country, and, and somewhat try to manage it and manage it to the best we can. Or these kids are gonna go out, and they're gonna join clubs, they're gonna get together in, in barns, whatever, sheds or whatever, and they're gonna play sports. And, and to think that that's not gonna happen, it's already happening. So we're gonna be a bit naive to think, eh, we'll say no, and kids are all gonna stay home and watch TV every night. It's not gonna happen.
Do we have, uh, any more discussion? Would anybody else wanna bring anything else to the table? Andy, I know you're on there. I saw you earlier. I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in on anything on this.
I'm gonna abstain, so I'm not gonna participate in the discussion.
Okay. Is there any more, uh, discussion on the matter?
What if we have a three-three vote? How does the tie break?
The volleyball in the SWOL conference ended in a tie. And how did that get passed on a tie? But how did that work?
Well, we have a board policy, don't we Mitch, on how to, how that works?
The, the conference, right, I don't know the difference between the two. The SWOL recommendation, the vote on the, on, in the SWOL meeting on, on what to do with volleyball, was not a tie. The, the vote was in favor of keeping volleyball in the fall.
No, what if, what if we have a tie on this motion vote?
Then the motion fails.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And, and basically, what I'm asking is for the direction that you would like me to go to represent Mineral Point schools in our conference meeting. Well, if we, uh, have no more discussion on this, um, I understand this is a very, very hard decision for some. But if there's no more discussion on the issue, let's, uh, take a vote, please Mitch.
Okay, so the, the motion is to keep fall sports, keep the fall sports season for high school and middle school in the fall, following the WI return to sports guidance. Stappes?
He's still on?
Austin? Larry?
Yes.
Sullivan? Yes. Bush? Abstain.
Abstain.
Dunn?
No.
Heisner?
No.
Lindsay?
No.
Chambers? Yes. So the motion failed, three to three.
I'd like to make another motion. I guess that we exclude football and, and we, we go ahead with, uh, cross-country and volleyball for both high school and middle school.
As long as it lines up with the conference. How about high school?
And we follow the WIA guidelines, of course.
Ms. Doll, are they playing fall vol, middle school volleyball? Is that a vote we need to make?
Still to be determined. Um, they said they would, depending upon what the, the high schools are gonna do, then they were gonna try to follow that.
Do we have any young men playing soccer in the fall?
Yes. You gotta, you, you guys also have to understand that if you do not vote for fall sports, that's gonna kill the soccer co-op.
Does, does soccer need to be included then, Vicky?
Yeah, but, you know.
Okay, I'll include that in my next, this motion then too, that, uh, that we, we go back to the discussion or the, the table on football, but, uh, any other sport that we've been currently enjoying in Mineral Point still takes place this fall, under the guidance of the WIA. Following the, the guidance.
We'll, we'll, we'll follow the guidance.
Just a motion. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Maybe I'll second the motion, otherwise it'll die. Okay.
So you're, you're telling me no boys soccer?
I'm not gonna second the motion because I said earlier, I'm not gonna pick and choose which sport is more important. So that's where I stand.
Okay, so hang on a minute here. So, are you, are you giving us the directive that no cross, no high school cross-country and no boys soccer?
No, the, the motion is to take football off the table.
Okay, but if nobody seconds it.
But keep volleyball, cross-country, soccer, keep the normal fall sports seasons intact. That's the reason, motion.
Right.
Right, no one has seconded that.
So, and if, so if nobody seconds it, then?
So then it all dies.
Then it all dies.
I will make the motion that we.
We, we have a motion on the table, Andy.
We didn't kill the first one?
Uh, just about, you know, just about to, so yeah, nobody seconded, then it's, then it's dead. Okay, it's, it's dead. Nobody seconded Larry's motion.
I'll make the motion that we play high school volleyball, cross-country, and soccer in the fall. Following WIA. Following WIA guidelines, to allow our co-ops to continue to exist, cause those kids won't have an opportunity in the spring.
I will second that.
So Andy, so football will not be played this fall then? Is that, is that kinda the consensus of the board that, uh, we're not even gonna discuss it?
I, it's just not part of this motion. I think there's been no action at this point. Um, I'm not participating in that vote. But I can participate in the non-football vote. Procedurally, I think, my opinion would be football's a fall sport. If there's no board action one way or the other, it would remain a fall sport, but that's for you guys to decide.
I agree. I mean, uh, we basically have a motion that failed, so we didn't give the board any, we didn't give the administration any direction, really. So, um, it's really gonna be up to, it's gonna be up to the superintendent and athletic director to vote in the conference and then follow whatever the conference decides and then we'll have to deal with that.
Okay, I'm a little confused, but, uh, whatever. So your motion, Andy, then is to only-
My motion for, for, because it's the ones I can participate in, um, and I'm not sold necessarily at the middle school level, to participate in high school volleyball, cross-country and soccer in the fall.
Okay. I got it.
Did that have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
I just wanna remind the board that soccer's, soccer's considered a high-risk sport. I know that it would kill the co-op. I would, um, I would recommend working with Dodgeville to move co-op sports to the spring. But, uh, um, uh, I, I can't support this motion for my reasons I stated earlier.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on this motion?
I just, I don't, as I said earlier, I just, I don't like picking and choosing which sports are more important than the other, so I, I don't support this.
Well, let's clarify this one more time then. So you, you say football is not off the table? And we're just giving the go-ahead to, to the three other sports for high school? I, I think, I think it's a start. It's a compromise.
I think you also gotta realize that the two sports in question are co-op sports. So, if you vote to not have cross-country volleyball in there, boys soccer, that's still gonna go on at Dodgeville, but our kids are not gonna be able to participate. And cross-country's been practicing for a week.
And we, and all this, we knew about when we had the first vote too. We all knew about that, but now we come into a situation where, where now we, we gotta face the co-op. Well, we knew that early. So now why are we, it makes no sense to me. As Doc said, soccer's a high risk. Last I knew, we're still in a pandemic. So it makes no sense to me when football and soccer are both considered high-risk sports. Why are we gonna allow soccer but not football?
The one thing is Andy can vote on this one. So, so football would become its own separate question, I guess, after this. Cause you didn't kill football in the fall yet. You just voted to not make it as part of the overarching. So it didn't kill football, but Andy can vote on this one. It won't end in a three-three tie. But to start to move forward, but then, yes, you have to have a football conversation, yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more comments? If not, we're gonna call the question. Mitch, go ahead please.
Bush?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Doc, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Dunn?
No.
Heisner?
No.
Stephanus?
Larry?
He's unmuted, isn't he? Somebody have his phone number?
That's not his phone number.
No?
Oh, okay.
Larry?
Larry?
You got me? Nate, yes. I, I'm sorry.
Sullivan?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
All right, so how do we weave through this? Let's-
I guess I would- I'm asking for how you would like me to vote in terms now of football only. I have the direction, how you want me to represent the district or the other sports that we participate in. Again, the rec- the voted recommendation from the SWOL conference was to push football to the spring. We can stay in the fall and find that conference. We can play in the spring and adjust the schedule. But, but how would you like me to vote in terms of football for the SWOL conference?
I'll make a motion that we follow the conference recommendation to move football to the spring and allow the conference to, uh, adjust winter and spring schedules to accommodate that. Assuming WIA guidance and assuming that, um, uh, the pandemic is trending in a positive direction in our area.
We have a motion on the table. Does anybody like to second? All right, we're open for discussion.
If the vote to do this was already four-two at the conference level and we were one of the two, what is the likelihood that it's gonna go the other direction anyway?
If the, the only football conference school that was not in attendance was Lancaster. As far as I know, Lancaster would prefer to play football in the fall, so that would've just made the vote four-three.
But Cuba City had not had a board meeting yet. It was last night.
Correct. They, they were getting their board direction, uh, for this meeting coming up at last night's. Their current position was to move it to the spring, but that was prior to the board recommendation.
If we said yes to this motion and the vote at the SWOL meeting swapped and it ended up that what was four-two before is now the opposite way, what would we do then?
Well, the, the motion says follow the conference recommendation.
Okay, so we would follow-
And the current conference recommendation is to play it in the spring. So I would look at that if, if the motion also comes in to play it in the fall, while we, again, while we all think for the pandemic, it might be better in the spring if I'm following the conference recommendation.
No, let me, let me clarify this motion. The, the motion is to move football to the spring. And when I, I meant, when I said follow the confer- the conference recommendation, I was referring to the informal vote that was, that had already taken place. I'm not referring to any future vote. Does that help Mitch?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question is, this is our direction basically as to whether we give the kids a chance to play football or not. And we, we voted to not have football in the fall, so this is our direction to give Mitch today, our last ditch, we're gonna do it in the spring. Is that correct?
And I'll just speak procedurally. Um, there is no action on the first. The action wasn't to not play football in the fall. There was no action. So we've decided nothing in terms of football.
It's really gonna be a tough fall. You're allowing three sports, but not football. How do I explain that to the athletes and the parents?
Good question.
Other schools are going hybrid and allowing fall sports. Our coaches, myself, are willing to take responsibility and do what we're supposed to do to keep our kids safe. I mean, that's what we're doing right now with this hybrid schedule and having kids come into the building. I mean, never in my thirty-six years in education that I ever think we would have to deal with something like this.
No doubt Vicki. This whole thing stinks and I, I don't like any of it. And you can vote the motion down, but I feel like that's our, given what's been voted on so far, I feel like that's our, our only recourse to give these athletes and parents and coaches a chance of any kind of a season this year.
But we don't know, we don't know that. We may not have winter sports. We, it, it could get worse. I mean, I think we could've had a shortened spring season. COVID is worse now than it was in May.
I agree Vicki, and I haven't voted for any fall sports in this meeting because when the house is on fire, you don't send the kids into the house until the fire's out. So, we're trying to, we're hoping that in the spring the fire's out and that it's safe to go back in the house. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it, so.
Then you need to tell that to our seniors.
Uh, you can put this on me, that's fine, but, um, and I'm just one person, but, uh, um, I think, I just, I feel like it's the wisest thing to do at this point, given all the craziness that's happening.
Vicki, I agree with you and, uh, I will not be supporting this motion either. I think, uh, I think we oughta get a better idea of exactly where our conference are, the, the SWOL, I guess, is standing and, and, um, let Vicki and Mitch then come up with a plan. They, they understand the board's concern and, uh, Vicki said it well, she's been doing this for almost forty years. And I, I, I really do trust that Vicki will keep our kids safe. So I think we oughta just, uh, not, uh, vote on football this morning and, uh, see what happens out of the, the meeting that Mitch is going to attend. Thank you.
You know, in schools that are playing in the fall, they play a whole season, they get through it, no incidences. Then what, what do we tell our kids? Or they'll tell us, hey, I told you so.
All I'm gonna say is that every prediction in the pandemic has turned out to be true. If you reopen, people will get sick. If you don't wear masks, people will get sick. If you don't have large masks, if you have large mask gatherings, people will get sick. That's all been true. And the writing is on the wall with fall, fall sports. If you do fall sports, there's a very high likelihood that there's gonna be an outbreak and the fall sports are gonna be canceled and that's gonna be it for our athletes. And that's what I don't want to happen. I think there's a greater chance for the kids to get an athletic experience in the spring where the risk is lower. And that's my explanation to the seniors. I think there's a better chance of them having a football experience in the spring than in the fall when we've got cases rising and we've got it spreading among young people like crazy.
Mitch, do you wanna explain the difference in the fall season and the spring season, the, the tournament in the fall and not in the spring?
In, according to the, the WIA scheduling, uh, our student athletes, if, if successful and healthy, have the possibility of playing two additional games, so they can play up to nine games and in essence get to the regional level of the tournament for football. If they play in the spring, the WIA is going to punish you and say there is no tournament opportunity. So the maximum number of games you could play would be seven.
With the conference.
And the conference is looking at playing five games. So you have the potential of up to nine or the potential of up to five, depending on what sports season you're playing.
Mitch, I just have a, a procedure question, um, in, in general. So, we've taken no action on the fall, assuming, my personal assumption is nobody's mind has been changed in fifteen minutes and, um, we have no action in the spring. What's the default if there's no action?
I'm guessing that the default would be that Ms. Dahl has to tell her coaches and the athletes that we're not doing nothing. We're sitting home. We're expecting these kids to get the best grades that they can when they have absolutely nothing to play for. And I would not wanna be her to have to tell all of them that.
Nothing to play for, but it's still your education. It's still your future. I know not everybody thinks that way, but I don't think we should just rule out the fact that there is some value in just learning. I mean, we are a school and it's important.
It's, it's a specific, yeah.
It, it is important. I mean, that's why we call them student athletes.
I, I guess my point procedurally is we've never voted to approve a scheduled season before. It's been scheduled and it's been, um, played. So if there's no action at all, I, I guess I'm questioning procedurally why we would have to approve a scheduled season.
I guess.
So traditionally, football has been a fall sport, so I believe, you know, you look at it and it's like, okay, so we've never, I've never asked the school board in the history of time to say, is it okay if we play football in the fall? That, that's just been the scheduled season throughout the life of football, I suppose. So I think to Andy's point is if, if this vote fails, are we still looking at football as a fall sport? That's what I'm understanding.
I don't know. And I, and I think too, Andy, you might be able to help me out with this. These kids have been together all summer. They've been working conditioning. Uh, they have open field. When they were, uh, were available, they have it?
I, Vicki, I don't really wanna interject.
I know, I know you don't, but just confirm that you did have it.
Um, my, my, my point, I guess, is, um, we have a scheduled season regard, whatever the season is. We don't take a vote on having the season. It's scheduled. So if there's no action, it seems to me procedurally, we would be left with a fall football season. Now, if the SWOL makes a decision to move to the spring, then we may need action. I'm just looking procedurally at, if this is a three to three vote, there's no action. Are we sending Mitch to the meeting on his own accord to vote how he feels right? And then would we need action out of the SWOL meeting?
So I would-
I guess I'm just looking procedurally.
Sorry. You know, I'm gonna vote already, but I would, I would agree that if we cannot come to action, we revert to the status quo, which is, as our superintendent, Mr. Weinhite, represents us, how he would have under any other circumstances.
which is as our superintendent, Mr. Weinright represents us how he would have under any other circumstances.
I, I fully understand what you're trying to say, Andy, and I would agree that it would go to the default would be the SWAL's conference decision because we're, we're basically locked in a tie. And that, that makes sense to me that it would then go to that. In a sense, the decision is the SWAL conference decision because ours is, is locked in a tie.
I guess the last point I'm going to say is in June, we voted unanimously to let athletic teams practice in the gymnasium. And at that point in time, we all knew the kids were traveling the country in Mineral Point with various different athletic groups. And we allowed them to come into our gymnasium on a unanimous seven to zero vote. But we can't come to an agreement now as to what we want to do for fall sports. If we were in a pandemic in June, we all knew about it. So I don't want to hear that the pandemic is worse now than it was then because it's still called a pandemic.
I just want to make.
It makes no sense to me that we can sit here and not make up our mind, but we were in favor of seven to nothing to allow athletic teams to use our gymnasium in a pandemic.
And they played, many of them played baseball together on our basis.
We had, we had student athletes traveling to Georgia to play baseball and came back. It just makes no sense to me at all.
Listen, there, there's a huge difference there and that is liability. Okay? We, none of the sports teams that participated using school facilities this summer were under the district's jurisdiction. And all we were doing is saying, can we open the gym or not to whoever wants to use it? Let the field be used. Fall sports is different. These are, these are district sanctioned sports. We are responsible for the health of these student athletes, for the education of these student athletes. These are our teams. This is not some club team where we have no control over the coaches and guidelines and any of that. And I see this as a huge difference.
But my, my point is we knew back then that kids were involved in club sports. They're still involved in club sports. So allowing them to use our facility in June, knowing that they're traveling the country, potentially getting the virus, they are bringing it back to our gymnasium. That's what I'm getting at. We knew all of this in June and it's still going on.
To Andy's point, I don't think, or somebody's point, I don't, I'll do. I don't think we've changed any, any minds. Can we call it to a vote and, and move on?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the table. The motion was to, again, Mitch, you want to just?
The motion is to move football to the spring. We have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. And let's call the question.
Done.
Yes.
Heisner.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Stepas.
No.
Solomon?
No.
Bush?
Abstain.
Chambers? Motion dies three to three.
Uh, no. Do we move on to middle school sports from here, Mitch? Or did we kind of cover that in that first motion?
The, the motion that passed was to support high school sports in the fall. There was no, there was no discussion about middle school sports.
And, and the, the Southern Eight was, was going to follow wherever like the high school decided, you know, unless as a group we decide to move volleyball to the spring. So if, if most schools are keeping volleyball in, in cross country in the fall, then we would follow that.
With the middle school?
Yes, yes. And middle school, we are not a part of the WIA. Just, just so you know that.
Okay, well, I guess, let's, does anybody want to make a motion to continue fall sports as scheduled with the middle school then? Or something?
I don't, I don't know. Anybody can make a motion. We have basically decided not to do it. I, I'm not going to make a motion.
All right, well, if there's no motions on the middle school athletics, then that'll just stay as is.
I'll make a motion that we move middle school fall sports to the spring using WIA guidance to keep the kids safe.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second on the table. Do we want to have any discussion on the middle school athletics?
If Southern Eight stays in the fall, we will not have a middle school volleyball season in the spring. Just telling you that right now. Or cross country. Because there'll be nobody to compete against.
Any more discussion? All right, well, we'll call the question, please, Mitch.
So the motion is to move middle school fall sports to the spring. Done.
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Stepas?
No.
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
No.
Motion passes four to three.
I gotta go to physical therapy.
All right, let's jump into the interior stone accents in the main street at the renovation at the elementary school. Do we have a layout of that at all, Mitch, or?
I do not. I didn't, I didn't get one attached. Currently, the design in Main Street, the elementary school, was to have a stone, you know, in a veneer.
Yes.
Basically.
Stone accent walls like we have.
Kind of the stone wall that's in the boardroom or the stone wall going down the steps from the high school to middle school. It was originally designed to be eight feet high and run the entire length of Main Street. In a couple of the meetings, we've talked about making it more of a wainscoting. So it might be three foot, three foot, four foot high. And then looking at some of the costs still associated with it. We have a group of crazy individuals who are willing to donate some time and to, to helping with that, but we would love, also like to reduce that to more accent pieces within that hallway instead of running it the whole length of the hallway.
So I've got some square foot numbers here. This is from Tim. They reduced, so again, we're talking about stone on the front entrances of both and reducing the pillar heights on those and the, like Mitch said, the accent wall areas. So as of now, the revamped plan is just under 1,100 square feet. The original was 1,500, I think around there. So they've reduced it, yeah, they've reduced it by about 400 square feet. So the question is, is on the interior, Tim made a recommendation if we're going to cut those down anymore or reduce them anymore to just eliminate any stone accent walls on the interior. And I didn't feel comfortable making this call alone, so I figured I'd ask, you know, we'd ask everybody. It would, it would reduce the cost of, of anything to the school, obviously, if we reduced anything like that and it could still be added afterwards too. So basically that's the question. Interior, interior stone on Main Street right now is at 409 square feet.
So what's your, what's your recommendation here?
So my recommendation is to, you know, it's, we've talked about it. It's kind of like this wall here by the, outside the library. That's a huge wall and that would cost a lot of money. For what?
Just to look nice?
For, for who, you know, so.
Aesthetically pleasing.
It, it is, but for, you know, it's, it'd be different if it was in the cafeteria or on the entrance of the school. So my thoughts are, is, is, kind of wanted some other people's opinions because obviously I know there's a few local guys that want to help donate some time and materials, but $40,000 worth of donations is, is kind of difficult. So again, I'm just kind of looking, we're looking for a little bit of insight on some of these stone accent walls, possibly interior, or just leaving the stone on the exterior entrances.
I need to go to the hospital, so I need to excuse myself from the meeting, but I'll, I'll just say that if we need to make some budget cuts for the project somewhere, this is probably a priority issue and so I would, I would support, you know, saving some money on this part of the project in favor of maybe more important parts of it.
Absolutely. I agree with you, Dr. Gunn.
Sorry, I have to leave, guys. Appreciate the discussion.
Thanks, Doc. Thank you.
This is Matt. Could I just ask a few questions?
Yeah.
I would agree.
Okay.
Sorry, Doc.
Yep. You, I think the last meeting I'm on, it's been kind of sporadic when I've been getting invites to these building meetings. Sometimes I get them, sometimes I don't. What is the, when was the, the last conversation I remember having with Mitch Gilbertson and the team was to reduce the accents? And we talked about putting in like showcases inside. I don't recall a conversation where we actually were not doing them at all inside. Is that, was that a recent conversation?
This was through Tim with HSR, not through Mitch, and it was through email.
Okay, so this wasn't a part of a.
Correct. This was, this was just through conversation. I personally reached out to Tim after some discussion with some others as far as eliminating or reducing those because we had asked them a few months ago to do so, reducing them in height. On the latest plans that I had gotten a couple of weeks ago, they were not. So that's kind of what started this conversation, Matt. So then we're basically just kind of furthering this conversation on possibly just eliminating interior stone for the time being. It can always be added in after the fact. But again, in, if we eliminated interior stone right now, that's, you know, roughly, roughly a cost of 16,000 to 20,000. Just kind of off the top of my head with reducing that, which like I said, can always happen after the fact. Part of the, put it the same, part of this that, part of the issue here was they needed it done in October. That was kind of thrown on us and that's kind of a, which again, it can always happen after the fact, but by Kramer's structure, they wanted it done by or in October, I believe.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. And is there, I guess the second question is, is there, were there budget areas that have been greatly expanded where we need to cut costs? You know, I know like excavation costs more than anticipated, but I don't know where, where that falls within the 5% contingency. I was just wondering if there is a direct need or if this is more just thinking ahead.
I think it's more just thinking ahead, Matt. I think, you know, it'd be hard, like I said, it's hard to justify a $20,000 wall here next to the stairway going down to the downstairs when we could have, whether it be Chromebooks, SmartBooks, MacBooks, or maybe pencils and paper for that matter, or desks or, or anything that's actually learning. Because in this, you know, that's just my thoughts on it. And like I said, I do this stuff for a living. So the stonework, it's, I get it's, it's something to look at aesthetically pleasing, like Joni said, but if we have that on the entrances to start with and then, hey, say we have money at the end or, you know, hey, I've got time. Let's go in and throw up a wall at the school, just kind of maybe plan for it, but maybe as of now, hold off on it so they can change their design plans. It's not going to change their walls. They're just going to extend them down and probably have named CMUs or something anyway. So it can always, which is going to happen regardless if we put stone on it. It's not going to change their plans. It's just other than they can get the flooring in now and not have to worry about it.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I, I just think the, the present, the, the design that was presented to the staff and myself is with the interior stone walls and I think that's the concept that people understand. So it's just something to be aware of, I guess. And if, if maybe delaying that, like you mentioned, and revisiting it later, I don't think we would have a problem with, I can't speak for everyone, but there is the concept of bringing the outside in and bringing some of the cool geography and aesthetics of Mineral Point inside the building. That is, from what I've read anyway, it's a, it's a concept architecturally that, you know, was, was interesting. So just something to think about.
No, and I agree, Matt. I, I really agree. I just, I think it was more, more of the timeframe where, hey, look, if we can postpone possibly interior accents, maybe revisit it, maybe, you know, like I said, it can always be added in. It's not, it doesn't have to happen right now.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Pushing that possible interior off. And that way, once Kramer's and HSR is out of the picture, we can kind of revisit that and come back in and maybe do something at a later date.
All right, thank you.
That's exactly where my head was. I'm supportive of this. I just don't know how to say it. So can you help us word emotion?
Oh, just, yeah, I guess, and again, if everybody's in agreement, obviously with, you know, Roger, Mitch and everybody, as far as maybe right now to, I guess we could essentially cancel the inside interior stone accent walls, just eliminate them for the time being, I guess we would say that. And then, you know, move forward with the exterior stone accents on the entrances. But just for now, like I said, through Tim's email aesthetically and design wise, if we're going to reduce it anymore, to just eliminate it on the interior.
So I move that we move forward with the exterior accents, but eliminate the interior accents to be revisited at a later date.
Perfect. And I will second that motion.
Any other conversation on this? No? Okay, hold on. People just calling, texting.
Yep. I've got my dad doing the same thing. Should I break it?
Have a meeting in 33 minutes.
Okay. All right, we're, we're just about there.
Okay, so we have the motions to eliminate the interior stone accent, keep the exterior and revisit at a later date.
The interior.
The interior.
Okay, Mitch, can we call a question, please?
We certainly can. Heisner?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Larry? Oh, Stepas is a yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Gunn is absent. Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Passes six oh.
All right, real quickly, let's do the reopening advisory committee.
This is the committee we see before us, correct?
Correct.
To, to those of you at home, and I apologize to Larry, you have an email. Anybody that is at home has an email of a list of the, it should be 12 individuals that has been pared down from those that expressed interest in serving on the ad hoc committee. We reached out to a community member because one of the, if you remember, it was a student, a staff, a community member without any children, an individual that had their child in 100% virtual medical professional, children, a child at each building level. So we have all of those in this list, other than the community member. We had reached out and community member, the, the people that we had talked, spoken to were not interested. So we will continue to reach out to fill that community non-student piece. But what you see before you is the recommended list. Nate and I had an opportunity to meet and go through everybody's application, so to speak, and everybody on here fits into that list. We will be asking Jane Lindsey, our school nurse, to kind of join to help provide additional information. She will kind of be a conduit from Iowa County Health Department. Mr. Austin would like to sit in on it as well as myself, but we will, we'll just be there more to. we'll just be there more to help conduct the meeting and provide resources. We're not voting member of this. So we just need basically a approval of this list for the ad hoc committee. I will, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this ad hoc committee. It appears to be a very diverse group, and I don't see an issue with it.
I'll second the motion.
Questions, concerns, comments? All right. If not, Mitch, go ahead and call the question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Okay, and as soon as I can get a community member committed, I will let everybody know who that is and we'll have next week.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposition? Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.